Order on Tuesday, September 3 at 6:31 PM. We'll call the role Asherall.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here. I'd like to ask everyone to please join in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Mike.
Mike, your microphone is turned off.
Okay, we'll move to approve the minutes for the August 8, 2024 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move to approve the minutes for the August 20, 2024 regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the August 26, 2024 special trustee meeting number one.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And move to approve the minutes for the August 26, 2024 special trustee meeting number two.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go to.
Should we use service?
Yeah, we'll do Mike, do you first Mike, go ahead.
How's everybody doing tonight? First thing I have is request for appropriations to purchase some assembly motor through Southeastern Equipment Company not to exceed 3,500. The guy couldn't give me an exact number on the shipping since it's coming out of Texas. This is a discounted source well item, so. Like I said, this came in right around, it was like almost 3,400, so. He thought 50 some bucks, so 50 somewhere in there to ship it, so I just. Do 3,500 not to exceed and then, you know, that way it'll clear us for shipping. And this is a motor for our mower, by the way, so.
This is the part that you called me about on Friday.
Yep.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing I have on the list is we got an email from Angie. You know, talking about what we want to pave next year for 2025. You know, she generally wants that list around generally the October mark. The roads that I would say to do next year would be continue on our mains, let's finish out and do Babcock. I would do a two inch mill and fill. And then I would also finish out. Marlin, which is also right there. And that's already been partway paved with the gas company, so you know, you don't have to do so much of a road there. And then you might as well do wood side drive, which is just a little one in between, so. That's what I would suggest something to her that'll put you at about 1.8 miles for a mill and fill pavement. Plus with the concrete that we have next year, you know, that's going to be the OPWC funded 50/50, so. Depending on what that comes back at, I mean, we were looking, I think between the engineers estimate that's going to be around 293 for our half. You know, we'll see what it comes in at when it goes up a bit, so. But that should put us at a safe mark for what we're looking at for paving next year.
I think that's a fair plan, I would support that if. If you have any, anything else you'd like to add or ask to consider. Just send it over to Mike, okay?
Okay, sounds good though.
Thanks Mike.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else?
Truck 10 is over at ESS right now, we're waiting on some estimates and quotes right now. Don't really know what's quite going on there besides the exhaust leak and the cab smell, so. They said, once we get that estimate, I'll probably be calling you guys so we can get that one moving, you know, get this back before winter. That truck's going to make it one more year, so. Still waiting on the okay for the Juddco truck build. We've been running into some issues with the prosecutor with that, so. It's been, once that bed's ordered, it's 26 weeks out, so it's got a while.
26 weeks on?
We got a while.
Less time than a fire truck.
So we won't get it for this winter, but you know, we need to get it, get it moving so we can get all these parts in. Other than that, the only other thing I was going to bring up and just ask if you guys have thought about like, you know, maybe a mower? Like looking at these parks, like we walked them today, they're starting to look a little shabby down there, so you know, they said just. Something to think about, we're either going to probably go rent one, that way we can at least get this moved one more time before the year, so it is somewhat decent for people to walk, so. I guess I just a thought, see what you guys think.
Is there an attachment we can get for an existing piece of equipment?
You can look at the skid steer, but if it's wet, you're going to bury it.
Yeah.
Or if you bury it, zero return, we can pull that out, the skid steer is going to be, we can pull it out, but it's going to, it's going to tear that up back there.
And what kind of cost are we talking about?
If we bought one?
About 12, like 12.
Yeah, our cost through Sourcewell, we're right around 13. For a commercial mower, you know, if we had to purchase it, I want to say it was around 16 to 17, that's our discount, so. The Sourcewell program.
If I am remembering correctly, also, didn't we? Say no to purchasing because it's not just the initial cost of it, it's the insurance and.
There were other costs associated with it, yeah, and plus we were looking at rolling that all into the new contract. But in the meantime, we do have this to take care of. And. When other things come up that we can't. Make arrangements for, it's, it's something that we could look at.
And we don't really know what the next contract's going to look like, but because we're not using.
This, this is not in the contract right now, so we got to do something this year, so we got to rent something, we got to get something.
So, and if you did, then you would have to add that to the contract, which will increase.
Yeah.
If you were out, you know, have it done.
Um, and you said your goal would be to mow it one more time?
It's, you're probably going to need to do it a couple of times, but yeah, at least one more time. Mark mowed that more than, he probably mowed that once a week down there, and there is people that walk that, so.
Yeah.
Well, for, you know, it's, it is a township park and we, we do got to maintain and take care of it.
Sure, sure, now. Approximate cost if we were to rent something?
I didn't even check into it, probably a couple hundred bucks, I guess, so.
Okay. But that might be the better way to go for the remainder of this year, so it gives us the winter. To figure out what we want to do for next year.
That's fine, I just, like I said, I just got to get something and get this done.
Right.
So, it's not. Nothing just disarray, so.
And then if we did purchase one to do that, we would also need to look at a trailer, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, you got to have something to haul it, so.
So, I think that's a fair suggestion to do the. Rent something for the, the one or two times this year, see what next year looks like and we consider it at that point. Okay?
Sounds good.
Anything else on your plate?
That's it for me.
Anybody have anything else for Mike? From the audience, no? Mr. Pearl, if that's a red light on there, would you press the button to make it green?
Thank you. Okay, Richard Pearl, I might have missed it because I came in late, quick question. Ditch mowing is usually done by the Labor Day?
First cutting, second cutting, we still have time, our mower is down right now.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what, that's, that part's on order, I have to order it out of Texas, so.
Okay, but you still intend to do the ditches this year?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Nothing else, you're free though.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, Mike.
From the fiscal office. Move for a 2024 Medina County Southern Water Conservation appropriation in the amount of $1,651.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will. Move to pay the bills in the amount of $125,803.66.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So. With. Fire not here, I just. I'll start with something here, our fire chief recently made us aware that he had received a great job opportunity and he'll be moving on. We wish him the absolute best and we thank him for his service here in Hinkley and the time he's put in here. His departure presents us with an opportunity to have a discussion about the future here in the township. And I'd like the board to consider opening discussions in two different areas. I believe the people at Hinkley Township overwhelmingly supported our fire department with the passage of the recent levy. It was astounding, I think, you know, no other way to put it. First, I think we should consider discussion on whether we should have. A full-time chief, that's one of the questions that came up and I think that's something that we should talk about. Second, I think we should also consider the possibility to go into some full-time fire department staffing in addition to the three we already committed to. I understand the budget would have to be completely analyzed and budget projections made before we could consider these possibilities. But it's something that I think is worthwhile looking into. Should we consider adding additional full-time members, I greatly hope that more of our current firefighters would apply for those positions. And. Lastly, I'm not sure that this is something we can handle financially right now, but I do think we need to give it due consideration, so. That's just something that I wanted to mention to both of you and for future consideration so that we can open discussions on it. So. With fire not here, if you'd want to go into the rest of these, or do you have anything else you want to talk about relative to that?
I have questions.
Okay, all right, you go first, since you're fire liaison.
Um. I think that this presents, um. I think that this presents an opportunity now to. Redefine some of these roles and including the fire chief, and that was something. I contemplated moving the chief to a full-time role. Spoke with a couple of chiefs in surrounding departments. I actually did speak with Martha today regarding the budget with that, so. That's definitely going to need to be a full conversation if that's the direction we want to go, I don't know that that's something. I don't think that's something that we can move forward with today, and that's one of the. Items that I have that I wanted to discuss because I sent both of you. The job description for the fire chief and also the administrative assistant. Because I'm hoping that we can make edits to the job description today so that we can move forward with posting. Looking for a new chief, but I think. There's so many unknowns right now, I would feel more comfortable posting for the position. As a part-time right now, and we can have those discussions about whether or not we want to go to a full-time chief.
Definitely a lot of factors to consider, but it's, yeah, I would agree, I. We can't flip a switch for sure, certainly.
Okay, um. And. I, I guess I'm curious if you could give me a little bit more of. When you're saying full-time. A, a full-time department, you know, in additional people versus just the three that we were looking at right now. Are you saying fully full-time and not? Not having any of our part-time that volunteer or a hybrid?
Well, that. I'm open to that, that makes a lot of sense that, you know, if, if you. Do a hybrid where you're supporting the full-time staffing you do have. I think that better serves the community, it's, you know, it's, we'd have some regular people who are always available here. And I think it makes some of those issues go away that the department's been dealing with of late. You know, relative to not being able to keep people on staff and.
And fulfill the minimum.
And, and finding people to backfill.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm. Definitely open to discussing that. Which I would. I mean, we'd have to sit down, talk to Martha to see, I mean, when I talked to Martha earlier today, you know. We would have to come back to the community sooner for a levy if we were to do something, you know, adding additional positions because. We, the budget right now allows for. These three full-time that we said that we were going to hire, so the levy covered that for the three-person staffing and the three full-time. So if we were to increase that number. We know we would have to come back to the community sooner than anticipated. For a levy, because. You can't go backwards, you know, once you go forwards, you can't go backwards. I think that Hinkley is an interesting, not interesting, but unique maybe in the sense that. You know, we are growing and I see the need for full-time people on our department, but I also see. The value in having the part-time help, the, the part-time firefighters and paramedics. That really built the department to what it is right now, and. I would be open to. I mean, if we could, if we could swing it and. Obviously, we're going to have to have a lot of conversations about this, but if we could do. Instead of three full-time, six full-time, so that we always have two full-time people on each shift. And then the third person would be. The volunteer, you know, our part-time. Firefighters and paramedics, that would be. That would solve the problems that we have with. Having the three-person staffing, because right now it's getting, getting people to sign up for all those shifts, which right now we can't mandate anything like that. Because we are a volunteer fire department, so. I would be. Open to discussing that further.
So, so would I, working it backwards, if we were to take that hybrid approach. I, I think then at. That point, I mean, before that point, you really need to consider whether the fire chief. Needs to be a full-time position, because if you're going to have full-time staff in the station. Who are there on a consistent basis, then I think you need to have a fire chief who's there Monday through Friday. Or whatever, on a consistent basis, so that you have good dialogue communication going on. On all shifts and as to what is taking place.
I agree, I agree with all of those statements, and I mean, I talked to Martha this morning about. About a lot of that, actually, because I think very similar to that. There were also. Other, other points of view that she brought in that are valid as well with maintaining. The part-time fire chief, so that's going to be something I think we're going to have. A lot of conversations about this moving forward, but I am open to.
Yeah, like I said, it's nothing that we can do overnight for certainly, and there's a lot of conversations that need to be had, but. I think it's important for us to talk.
Agreed.
Okay. Um. That kind of. Moves me into. Did you guys get a chance to look at what I sent you with the job description?
Mm-hmm.
Of, um. Well, let me, okay, let me get to. This first, and that is. Move to accept the resignation of Lieutenant Andrew Baxter effective September 30th, 2024. And the resignation of Administrative Assistant Jen Amburn effective immediately.
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Move to re, uh, move to accept the three-month leave of absence request for firefighter Kyle Bowman.
Second.
Second, discussion?
Uh, he has taken a full-time position, so he has to have his three months of leave so that he can be at that department. Full-time for three months before he can come back to the township.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Um. I'm going to circle back to touch a truck because I would like to talk to you both about. Some thoughts that I, I had with Martha this morning regarding the. The fire chief.
Okay.
And that is that to move forward so that we can start this process of trying to replace our fire chief. I would suggest. That we combine the administrative assistant position with the fire chief. Position and have more of an administrative fire chief. Still part-time. And with that, since we're consolidating the two jobs, we could increase, the budget allows for this to increase the pay to $55,000 a year. So we're not actually spending any additional money, but we are consolidating to simplify the roles.
I, I think that would be beneficial to have. Kind of a more administrative aspect to the fire chief, and if that's, you know, the way to get to there, because we've got the opportunity to combine those two budget positions. I would say we should try and combine that and do that. See if it makes sense.
Fair enough.
Um, with that in mind, I don't really have anything to omit from the fire chief job description that we had used previously. I would just recommend. Adding in some of the administrative assistant responsibilities, and what I would recommend that we add into this. Is responsible for staffing schedule and in support, incident report accuracy and payroll entry. Do you guys have a copy of this?
I'm pulling it up.
Just wait a minute. So say those again, which ones are they just?
What I would recommend. Adding into the fire chief is third bullet point, third bullet point, responsible for staffing, schedule and incident report accuracy and payroll entry.
Okay.
So I would like to include that in the job description. Next bullet point, I would like to add that in, submit reports to state and national fire and EMS reporting systems. And the next bullet point oversees training records and certifications. Then scroll down a little bit, maybe seven, it's data collection, retrieval and reporting. I'd like to see that added in.
Oh, we do. Okay.
And I don't know if this is important to add in here or not, because it's not in the current chief job description. And that is proficiency in Microsoft Word, Excel and Outlook. Add that in.
I would add that in.
Okay. Is there anything else that you would recommend? Recommend adding in here?
Not that I came up with.
Okay.
I think the rest is covered in existing fire chief.
Okay, so if I add those in, are you both comfortable with that and having this posted on the website as early as tomorrow? If we can get it up there?
It would be.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, then I want to talk to both of you and our community as well about touch a truck.
Yeah, just, we step back one for, for Martha with the acting chief. Do you want to do that now or is that later?
I can do that now.
Okay.
Okay, um. I would move to appoint Assistant Chief Sean Barrett to Acting Chief of Hinkley Fire Department effective Monday, September 2nd, 2024, until a new chief is hired.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I wanted to ask you both if you were comfortable with this, since we are going to have an acting chief. Who is currently our assistant chief, are you comfortable putting him temporarily at the chief pay? Since he will be acting chief and doing the chief responsibilities?
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, then I would move to temporarily change Acting Chief. Sean Barrett's pay to Chief of Fire pay effective September 2nd, 2024 until September 28th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is something that if we are still searching for a new chief at the end of the pay period, then we can amend this and extend it. Um, I would move to suspend the email accounts for Justin Grossenbaugh and Jenny Amburn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize credit authorization for Acting Fire Chief Sean Barrett for the following accounts and amounts. Home Depot for $1,000, Capital One for $1,000, Amazon Pay by Invoice $1,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Acting Fire Chief Sean Barrett has requested to not have a township phone. So I don't know if you both have his phone number, I will make sure that you have his contact information. Before we leave tonight, if you need that, but.
I do not, so if you can.
I will make sure I give that to you, and I've already told Martha that, so we can cancel the account that Justin had. So you can delete that number. Okay. Um. Touch a truck that. The former chief mentioned about a month ago will still happen on September 29th. It's going to be at the fire station as it always has been. Um. That made for an interesting Tuesday, trying to get, get some. Some trucks scheduled to, that will be here, because we didn't have anything set up yet, so I wanted you both to know. I've been working with Acting Chief today, and we were able to, through the help of some of the local agencies, also. The police department, the service department, we were able to secure some trucks, so that will still go on from 1 o'clock until 4 o'clock. And if there's anybody in the community that has connections or has a truck or a big tractor that they would like to have. As part of Touch a Truck, you can contact myself or Acting Chief Sean Barrett.
Sounds good.
All right. And that. Was a lot for fire, but I believe that's it.
Hey, zoning?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to ask the table the. Lot split signing till next meeting, the Mylars had a small error in them, so they're getting them reprinted, so we'll do that next time.
Very good.
Okay. I have, you have on your table a proposal from BNT to do a review of our network and our telephone. So again, this kind of started with Keelis Entry project and which bet that whatever we look at Keelis Entry is going to involve the network, which kind of precipitated the question in my mind is gee, what does our network look like currently? And we had a power outage, if you recall, some weeks ago, which created some issues with our phones. And we've also found out that our phone system that's currently in place is at end of life. And so, in fact, there are other solutions out there that are more cloud-based and they may go a long way in terms of reducing our monthly phone bills. So one of the things trying to get my arm around because there's nothing that really documents how our network looks connecting all our buildings and whatnot. BNT is a network type of vendor. They were involved with the original phone system selection. So I've asked to put together a proposal, what it would take to just kind of walk all the buildings and this would require police, fire service and town hall and identify what's in the closets and work together with, you know, probably Lynn and myself in terms of what is on maintenance, what's on, no, it's not on maintenance. What is kind of old and may be nearing its end of life and may need to be replaced and also kind of what the options are out there for telephone systems today. So they put together a proposal, they would document that to us along with some recommendations. They're estimating thirty-eight hundred dollars to do this. And so that's their proposal and I'm, you know, thinking that we probably should move forward on something like this and get your thoughts on that. You know, if you want to look it over and talk about it in the next meeting. But it's, you know, something I think we're going to have to do no matter no matter what.
Yeah, because the phones definitely, we know that.
The phones are basically no longer manufactured and so they, you know, like replacement of those phones with the current models that we have, right? The current old models just may not happen and we had a phone that didn't come back up after the power and that was like a major issue and plus, you know, also some of our backup, you know, our power backup systems maybe need to be looked at in terms of their runtime and what we need to do, so.
I think a lot of it has more to do with the configuration of how it was, you know, how they buildings interact and.
Yeah. But, you know, a lot of this has to do with things being added over
Right.
different years with different vendors. And then like, you know, sometimes they're on maintenance agreements, sometimes they're not and so that the power outage really shed a lot of light on this because it was kind of difficult to figure out how things were connected essentially.
We're probably going to lose our eight-track tape player, but that's what it is. Yeah, I'd like to look at it a little bit more.
Okay. Could simplify that closet then.
Yeah, there's things that can actually be removed and then there's you know, things that may need to be swapped out. So. So, yeah, if you want to take a look at that, I feel very comfortable with the vendor themselves having the capability from a wide-area network perspective to be able to look at all this and give us some direction and documentation of what we have. Like, I'm really after the documentation for one and direction for two.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm inclined to say yes, but I'd like to take a little more.
Definitely, so.
Very good.
And that's all I really have.
Cemetery?
Is there something there?
No.
Nothing there.
Trustee Asher.
Ah.
The fire chief.
Yeah, I would move to adjourn to executive session to discuss employment of a public employee or elected official.
Would you like to do that now?
We can do that now. We're at the end. Your preference?
I'll second that.
I'm gonna call the role, we'll call the role on that first, Asher.
Yes.
Angelman?
Yes.
Swedick, yes. We will do that after we click off these few here.
Okay. We already edited the fire chief. Wanted to verify that the single holler bid that we had worked on the last couple of meetings. I know you said you were taking care of the edits. I just wanted to verify that did get sent to the prosecutor's office for?
It did. It went out at the, at last week. We, I'm sure that you know between the three of us and who else we sent a lot of things over there in this past few days. So I'm sure it's on his desk, but I haven't received it back yet.
Okay.
So I had a question on the, one of the exhibits, the medical exemption form. And I don't remember if we talked about it or not, but it indicates that if somebody is applying for it, that they should return the form to town hall and somebody from town hall would get back to them on whether they've been approved. Are we still keeping that process at the township? So.
So we can modify the after returns to indicate that it should be sent to the contractor.
Contractor, okay. Yes, I just noticed that.
How'd you miss that with that fine-tooth comb? You went over it, I mean.
Couple of teeth broke.
Geez, Cindy, you're letting me down over here. Um, okay. Very good. And to provide you both with an update on, we had talked about doing that drive-in movie for our final movie night of the year at Our Lady of Grace Church. Our Lady of Grace Church is going to let us use their parking lots. It is going to be right after, immediately following the trick-or-treat in the center of town. And the police association did purchase a transmitter. So people will actually be able to tune their radio station, you know, in their car to whatever station it is so they can hear what's going on. So that will be our next movie night and that is sponsored by the Hinckley Holiday Market.
It'll be here before we know it.
The movie night or Hinckley Holiday Market?
Yes.
The holidays, yeah. Snow.
No, snow's not coming yet. Okay. That's that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody, I'm gonna do public now so they can depart if they want. Anything from the public? Yes, call? All right. We, we will go into executive session at seven oh nine. No. Move to come out of executive session at seven fifty-two PM.
Second.
Second by Asher, we'll call the role, Asher.
Yes.
Angelman?
Yes.
Swedick, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Johnson as fiscal officer for Hinckley Township effective December 1, 2024.
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also like to make a motion to hire Jennifer Johnson as a township employee for the purpose of fiscal officer training at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour effective September 4, 2024 until November 30th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I just, I would like to thank both of our candidates for applying and reaching out to, to serve their township. I think that after the interview process, we felt that Jennifer Johnson was the best candidate having the necessary skills and experience to fulfill the role of fiscal officer. But thank you to you both.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right, I will move to adjourn at seven fifty-three PM.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.